All right, I think we're ready. You good? So I'll call to order the meeting of the Charlestown City Council. It is August 3, 2020, and it's 6:30 PM. We will open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance this time, led by, I always like to find the youngest person in the audience if I can. And I saw Leila come in, asked Leila if she'd be willing to do the pledge, and she said sure, once we told her what it was all about. So Leila, Leila Craven, come on up and get us started in the pledge of allegiance while I've been joining you.
Pledge of allegiance to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Awesome. Thank you so much. We did not have anybody sign up for invitations this time. That's always invitations, always a reason to do that, just to let us know. We'll move on down the agenda to the termination of quorum and roll call. We will do this out loud. We do have one member joining us on Zoom, so Bo Bur- just say here, Bo Burtrum, District 1.
Here.
Ruthie Jackson, District 2, here. BJ Steele, District 3.
Here.
Brian Hester, District 4.
Here.
And JT Cox at large.
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum. We begin with the approval of the agenda. We've all been provided with a copy of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve it that's been provided.
I make motion.
Motion made by BJ Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda passes unanimously. You have two sets of minutes before you, the one for the regular council meeting that occurred on Monday, July 6, and then the one for the executive session that was held on Tuesday, July 7. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make motion.
Motion made by BJ Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, any discussion, changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass unanimously. You've all been provided a copy of the claims. I'll entertain a motion to approve those claims. Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by BJ Steele, any discussion or questions about the claims? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Claims pass unanimously. And you've been given a copy of the payroll allowance docket from July 4, 2020 to August 2, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve that docket.
Make motion.
Motion made by BJ Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, any discussion on the payroll allowance docket or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously. This is the time in the agenda when we have regular public comment for regular agenda items. This is not the public hearing yet, so has anyone signed up? I have one that was emailed, but has anyone signed up for regular public comment on the agenda items? Not really. Is that for the public comment or is that for the hearing?
That's for comment.
Okay, I'll just say if you're here for the general public comment for the agenda, not the sanitation public hearing, come up. Otherwise, I have one to read that was submitted online. Good? Okay, so there was one public comment submitted online. We are allowed to accept email public comments right now because the governor has extended the date of emergency. This one comes from Kirk Brown at 351 Level Street in Charlestown. He said, "If the following could be read on my behalf this evening, I would greatly appreciate it. In regarding the dog bite ordinance, the only thing I would like to be considered to be added to the ordinance would be communication. Should a person be injured by an animal, they should be notified in what steps are being taken. This would have saved a great deal of grief and misguided criticism, only to discover that all was being done in a timely, legal, and professional manner. Please extend my thanks to Tony Jackson and Lee Slaughter as well." I'll give you a copy of that. Okay, there's no additional public comment on the general meeting, so we'll move to the mayor's comments. I'm requesting a number of action items from the council on tonight's agenda. First is that I want to express support for Resolution 2020-R8, originally sponsored two meetings ago in June by councilmember BJ Steele. This resolution transfers the deed for the land situated at the Depot Street Revitalization Site to the Redevelopment Commission. This transfer is necessary to proceed with the development of that property. I look forward to seeing this location cleaned and transformed into a wonderful mixed-use development that will benefit not only the current residents of Charlestown, but future residents of Charlestown as well. Second, I am sponsoring Ordinance 2020-OR12, which updates rates and procedures for the collection and removal of solid waste in the city. This ordinance was approved on first reading at the regular June meeting and is up for a second and final reading tonight. I want you to know that I don't make this request casually, as I fully appreciate the implications of a rate increase, however small it is. It's important to note that Indiana Code, Section 3693021, subsection C, requires that municipalities set a sanitation fee that is sufficient to pay the costs of operation, repair, depreciation, and maintenance of their utilities. Unfortunately, for the past two years, the sanitation department has operated at a loss. In 2018, that loss was $24,215, and in 2019, that loss increased to $61,100. This is an unsustainable pattern for us. The Board of Works requested a rate analysis by financial advisors at Baker-Tilly, and in order to meet our expected costs for next year and to allow for the purchase of a much needed new truck, they recommended a rate increase of 20%, which would have added $3.60 per month for a new total monthly bill of $21.60. After a full review of that recommendation, the Board of Public Works unanimously recommended a more conservative rate increase of only 14% for a new monthly total of $20.52, which represents a $2.52 increase per month. In order to be as financially responsible as possible, I've taken steps to offset costs by eliminating overtime for our employees, cutting back in as many areas as possible, and most recently having our sanitation staff perform an audit of cans in use to identify customers who had cans that were unaccounted for. That audit revealed that we have 20 households with one can who were not in our system at all, for a total of $4,320 a year. We had 398 households who had two cans but were only paying for one, which represents a possible revenue increase of $23,880. Taken in consideration both of these totals, there's a total possible recovery of $28,200. A full report of that has been provided to all the council members tonight, and I apologize for the fact that we just got this audit done today. It was kind of a hustle on behalf of our staff. Please keep in mind that this number assumes that everyone who is notified that they have to pay for a can will in fact pay for that can. History shows us that when we notify people that they have to start paying for their second can, they choose instead just to turn it in, and that revenue is not received. Despite the savings that we've implemented, we still have not been able to account for the anticipated end-of-year loss. That $28,000 possible does not count for the growing deficit that was $61,000 last year. We're under a statutory mandate to fund the sanitation department as a standalone operation. While on the surface, it might seem like we could take from another department to offset the loss, it's not an option, and it would actually transfer more expense to our residents if we were to do this. The money in our general fund comes from our distribution of the property taxes that you pay. Sanitation operates on a monthly user fee instead. If we take money from the general fund where you've paid your property taxes and we use it to offset the shortfall in sanitation, then technically you would be paying twice, and we simply cannot allow that to happen. It's not responsible. Thanks to the savings that we have been able to identify, the recommended ordinance asks only for the 14% increase instead of the 20%. This means that users' bills would go from 18 a month right now to $20.52 a month, a $2.52 a month increase. We've also modified user fees for bulky item pickup to make sure that the most frequent users of the service are the ones who are paying, thus not penalizing those who do not regularly place large items for pickup. The ordinance also streamlines the collection process. Rather than having to think to call in for service of your pickup of bulky items, customers would know that their extra items would be picked up automatically on their regular trash day. This procedural change will help us maintain the streets in a much cleaner and efficient way. A key part of this process is Ordinance 2020-OR17 that I am also sponsoring this evening. This additional appropriation ordinance moves money from our capital trust fund to pay off some of our higher interest loans, and it allows us to purchase a new garbage truck without taking on additional debt. This new truck will allow us to complete more pickups than we currently can and will offset the massively high repair costs that we've been incurring on our oldest truck, which exceeded $100,000 last year. This additional appropriation, in combination with the $2.52 monthly increase, will bring us into compliance with state statute that mandates that we have to fund our utility, and it will allow the sanitation department to operate more efficiently, cost-effectively, and enable us to develop a capital improvement fund within the sanitation department so that future equipment and truck replacements don't have to be done on loans with interest, but rather can be purchased outright. Our sanitation crew works hard, and the council has certainly recognized that, you all do. This past week, we pulled laborers from the street crew, thank you Brad and Joe, to help our sanitation crew. Dusty, Jason, Mike, Trevor, Garrett, Lee, and Jim, they do a thorough job of cleanup in the city, and they worked hard this week to go through and pick up everything they could find, call or no call, they picked it up. We wanted to start fresh this fall with a very pretty city. By function, the sanitation department has to operate as a business, meaning it must not only cover its costs, but it has to provide for future equipment needs. Our building commissioner anticipates that in the next three years, we will see 676 new single-family housing units. Without a rate that helps us develop a replacement plan for our aging equipment, we will not be able to keep up with this demand. I'm eager to see this much-needed revised ordinance passed because in addition to helping our crew work more efficiently, we'll also be able to mail out an information packet to all existing customers and have it available for new customers so that they'll know what to expect and how to place their waste for pickup so that it makes it more efficient on our workers. Now, I understand that some people have questions about this proposed revision, and I hope that I've answered some of those questions this evening and therefore demonstrated that this decision is not made lightly, but is definitely necessary. It may be that the council decides to table this ordinance again to review the findings of the audit that was completed only this afternoon, and I respect that. So, my staff and I want you to know that we are here to help provide any information that we can to be as helpful as we can in helping you make this decision. Finally tonight, I'm also asking that the council pass 2020-OR15, a fair housing ordinance that will enable us to apply for the OKRA Small Business Grant Program, and Ordinance 2020-OR18, which amends the existing sewer fee scheduled to add a disconnect or reconnect fee to offset charges that we incur when Indiana American Water is forced to disconnect and reconnect water customers. That's all I have. We will now open the public hearing portion that was advertised for this meeting on this sanitation ordinance. Under public hearing rules, I believe that speakers have two minutes to speak. Would someone like to time that? Mickey?
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Tubby, we had a sign-in sheet for public hearing.
Josh Craven.
Josh Craven, if you'll come up and I give your name and address, we will.
Josh Craven, Toolturn Gilbert. Yeah, I'm a little confused now, because I come in here thinking that you guys are having an ordinance that was already shown to me, and then come to find out it's all been twisted and changed or something. I'm a little weirded out, but anyways, my first one started off by saying that I come up here because I respect the council, the mayor. This is a so much better administration than I'm used to dealing with on a normal basis, okay? I completely respect you guys. But I want to point out something, and I know it's the obvious, everybody in here knows this, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and raising the rates even a nickel for people is crazy. I can afford $2.50. I can name 100 people that can do it, but I can also name 100 people that that might hurt. I remember JT Cox came up here, I watched him do it a few times ago, a few meetings ago, and he made it a point, he was like, you know, it's not, it's the moral aspect of it, in the middle of a pandemic. The other issues I have with it are stemmed a little bit deeper than that. It's the paying $50 for a bag and all these other things. When the homeowners aren't the issue, I go around town, I'm around town all the time, I've been here my whole life. I don't think the homeowners are the issue here. You've seen it, the cans and things, that was the bigger issue. The second issue is, it's a lot of the landlords, they leave their trash, they'll move out, they won't even, they won't even go get a dumpster. They'll just leave, and the city's on the hook for the $100 worth of disposal fee at the landfill. I run a neighborhood association along with a bunch of other people. We spent $400 to go get a dumpster when a tenant moves out. So what's that saying is, is my neighbor across the street, he just left his trash there for six months. The city was on the hook eventually, had to go pick it up. I should have just left our trash there for six months and let the city be on the hook for it, but instead, we did the right thing, and we went and spent $400 for a dumpster. But now, I guess everybody's not like us. But at the end of the day, it's, you know, next year, they're going to raise the rates of our Duke Energy rates, they was going to do it right before this pandemic happened, and they said they was going to do it up to 20 to 30%. That's 70, that's anywhere between $50 to $75 a month per household. And then on top of this, Indiana American Water's going to raise the rates, you're looking at anywhere between 80 to $125 in the next two years for our household utilities to be raised. And we're in the middle of a pandemic. I'm not asking, I can afford it, a lot of other people can. What I'm saying is, is can we just be a little bit more compassionate about it and just be like, hey, maybe we just move on from it and address this again next year and try to figure out another way to work this out? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Mr. Craven. Thank you. Next?
Dave Sexton.
Dave Sexton.
I'm going to be faster.
Can you state your name and address for the record, sorry?
David Sexton, 104 Sunnyside Drive, right here in Charlestown, in the city limits. First thing, thanks for Ruthie Jackson, I watched the last meeting for tabling this so we could have some public comment, and thanks for the mayor for putting it out there to try and tackle this problem. On the bill I just showed you, I went over last night the water penalty down at the bottom, right above the yellow box, we don't have water anymore, so it's something that may want to be taken out there, and also, I noticed there's no penalty for sanitation. There is a penalty for wastewater, but there's no penalty if you don't pay your bill for sanitation, so I don't know if that's something that needs to be discussed at some time. And the next thing I have is the water utility sale credit on there is $18. The way I understood it was supposed to be 20, 15, 10, 5, then 0. So I'm not sure why mine's $18. But I got thinking about it last night, and this might be a question, I don't know if Donna can answer it, but can we, the water sale, can we legally take that money? Is that, is that real money? Is that $20 that we're getting credit for, or $18 a month? Can we take that money and use it for sanitation? Is that real money? That's what I'm really asking.
This money was appropriated from the sale of the water, is where this came from.
So is it real money?
Yes.
So is there any way we can take that money and instead of, what are we doing with it? Just given, is there any way it can go over to the sanitation area? That's what, that's really what I'm asking, legally.
That's up to the council.
Okay, so that's something y'all may want to talk about. Okay, and also, have we checked around for insurance rates for the city vehicles? You know, rule of thumb is every three years, you check to see the, see the rates on your personal vehicles, has the city done it, will they do it? And also, have we ever looked into leasing a garbage truck instead of buying it outright? Is it cost-effective? My sister lives in Henryville, this is just letting you know, she pays 15 a month. My brother-in-law, he lives six miles from me, he lives in Charlestown Township, he pays $12 a month. So, on Thursday alone, Ruthie, she passed out, her and her people passed out about 4,000 gallons of milk, and at JC it's $3.19 a gallon for milk, so people are hurting out there. So, all I ask is, in the end, maybe just do this in January, make it effective in January, and if we do, maybe go above the $2.42. That way we can tackle the problem instead of just putting the band-aid on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. Others? Tubby? No other, so is there anyone else that would like to speak on the public hearing aspect of this, before we close out the public hearing? Okay, hearing no others, we'll officially close the public hearing and move on to the agenda. Up next, we have ordinance and the resolutions. The first is Resolution 2020-R8, Transfer of Real Estate Property from Council to Redevelopment. I'll entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
Make a motion.
Motion made by BJ Steele, is there a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Brian Hester, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that, if we transfer this land, is contingent upon the letter you sent to us about how the land will be used?
The, I support the RFP Review Committee, which we're a part of. I support their finding that it would be used as the multi-use facility that was reviewed.
Right.
And we'll begin those negotiations with that company, yes.
I just want to make sure that we approve this, understanding that that's what that land's going to be used for.
That's my understanding for the lease of the land. Any other discussion, questions?
Does that need to be changed in the wording, or how is it that?
Not that I'm aware of. Mine.
You could, you could put it in the resolution, you could put it in the deed if you want to put a restrictive covenants on that.
I would respond, you absolutely can, you can put a restrictive covenant in the, the transfer document. I would also point out that since this is going through redevelopment with a development company that's being worked with, that's going to come back in front of the council for approval of a TIF district as part of that redevelopment project, so you have some, some purse strings attached to this where you, if it appears that this commitment to go forward with this development as proposed is not being followed, there's a check and a balance on that process further down the road. Certainly, the council can, if a member wants to amend the resolution to include restrictive covenant language, that's something that you can do, but I would say that you can also enforce this commitment the mayor's made in other ways without amending the text of the resolution that's in front of you.
Well, they also have to, there's a zoning change that would have to happen as well.
There's also, that's right, because it'll have to be approved as a, as a planned unit development, and so that would also come in front of the council for approval prior to anybody breaking ground on any sort of development there. So there are at least two places where the council would have discretionary authority to stop this from moving forward if it appeared that this commitment that the mayor's made were not being honored. That said, as Mike has said, you can put a restrictive covenant on a real property if you wish to change the language of the resolution to do so, but, but there are other ways to enforce this commitment.
And I would be hesitant to do that because, as discussed in the redevelopment, any agreement is dependent upon the due diligence done by that company, and I would be, I would caution the council against putting a restriction that would limit the ability to do negotiation should the company that is first chosen back out because of the due diligence that they didn't find satisfactory or anything else. Ultimately, if a development starts to go in there that the council disapproves of or that differs from what the review committee put forward, the council would be able to stop that right now by not approving the plan. Other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of approving Resolution 2020-R8, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next is Ordinance 2020-OR12, upward second and final reading. Entertain a motion for the council to take action on that how they choose.
So if we want to table it, we need to just say we...
Make a motion to do so.
I'll see. I thought we were in agreeance that it would be tabled until we got all the numbers and we could look at them and go forth with the clear conscience of what the public says and what our numbers were. I didn't get the email until 5:20. I appreciate the hard work, I do, that that was the agreement that we had, that we would go forth with it if we had all of these things and we weren't able to have all of those things at the right time, so I thought it was in agreeance already that it was going to be tabled.
Ultimately, you have to, you have to vote to table it, and so that's, that's horribly fine if you want to do that.
But our agreement was that you would suggest that we table it.
I, I said in my statement earlier, that if the council wanted more time to, previously in my statement, I said that I support you... So all I ask is in the end, maybe just do this in January, make it effective in January. And if we do, maybe go above the two dollars and forty-two cents. That way we can tackle the problem instead of just putting the band-aid on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton. Others, Toby? No other, so is there anyone else who would like to speak on the public hearing aspect of this before we close out the public hearing? Okay, hearing no others, we'll officially close the public hearing and move on to the agenda. Up next, we have ordinance and the resolutions. The first is Resolution twenty twenty R eight, transfer of real estate property from council to redevelopment. I'll entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
Make a motion.
Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that we, if we transfer this land as contingent upon the letter you sent to us about how the land will be used.
The, I support the R P review committee, which we're a part of. I support their finding that it would be used as the multi-use facility that was reviewed.
Right.
And we'll begin those negotiations with that company, yes.
I just want to make sure that we approve this, understanding that that's what that land's going to be used for.
That's my understanding for the lease of the land. Any other discussion, questions?
Does that need to be changed in the wording or has it that?
Not that I'm aware of.
You could, you could put it in the resolution, you could put it in the deed if you want to put a restrictive covenant on that.
I would respond, you absolutely can. You can put a restrictive covenant in the, the transfer document. I would also point out that since this is going through redevelopment with a development company that, that's being worked with, that's going to come back in front of the council for approval of a Tiff district as part of that redevelopment project. So you have some, some purse strings attached to this where you, if, if it appears that this commitment to go forward with this development as proposed is not being followed, there's a check and a balance on that process further down the road. Certainly, the, the council can, if, if a member wants to amend the resolution to include restrictive covenant language, that's something that you can do. But I would say that you can also enforce this commitment the mayor's made in other ways without amending the text of the resolution that's in front of you.
Well, they also have to, there's a zoning change that would have to happen as well.
There's also, that's right, because it'll have to be approved as a, as a planned unit development. And, and so that would also come in front of the council for approval prior to anybody breaking ground on any sort of development there. So there are at least two places where the council would have discretionary authority to stop this from moving forward if it appeared that this commitment that the mayor's made were not being honored. That said, as Mike has said, you can put a restrictive covenant on a real property if you wish to change the language of the resolution to do so, but, but there are other ways to enforce this commitment.
And I would be hesitant to do that because, as discussed in the redevelopment, any agreement is dependent upon the due diligence done by that company. And I would be, I would caution the council against putting a restriction that would limit the ability to do negotiation should the company that is first chosen back out because of the due diligence that they didn't find satisfactory or anything else. Ultimately, if a development starts to go in there that the council disapproves of or that differs from what the, the review committee put forward, the council would be able to stop that right now by not approving the plan. Other questions, discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving Resolution twenty twenty R eight, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Next is ordinance twenty twenty O R twelve, upward second and final reading. Entertain a motion for the council to take action on that how they choose.
So if we want to table it, we need to just say we.
Make a motion to do so.
I'll see. I thought we were in agreeance that it would be tabled until we got all the numbers and we could look at them and go forth with the clear conscience of what the public says and what our numbers were. I didn't get the email until five twenty. I appreciate the hard work, I do. But that was the agreement that we had, that we would go forth with it. If we had all of these things and we weren't able to have all of those things at the right time, so I thought it was in agreeance already that it was going to be tabled.
Ultimately, you have to, you have to vote to table it. And so that's, that's totally fine if you want to do that.
But, but our agreement was that you would suggest that we table it?
I, I said in my statement earlier that if the council wanted more time to, previously in my statement, I said that I support you in your decision whether to pass it or to table it if you need more time to look over the audit that was done. They, they worked hard to get the audit done. If you want more time, I totally respect that, and it's entirely up to you.
I would like to table it, because I, I need more thoughts on this, because I, I didn't have a chance to look at this till I walked in the door here.
So Brian Hester makes a motion to table, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. All in favor of tabling ordinance twenty twenty O R twelve on its second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance twenty twenty O R fifteen, the Ora Fair Housing Ordinance. I believe that Jill, Jill, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, I believe Jill Segasera from the Wheatley Group is here to speak about this Ora Fair Housing Ordinance. Jill, I'll see the floor to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I just wanted to give you an explanation of why this came forward. Whether, you remember or not, earlier this year, probably in April, the city applied for two grants from ORA. Those two were not awarded. If they would have been awarded, because of the process that ORA was going through at that point in time, they had fast-tracked some things, then we would have had to provide it in our fair housing ordinance, or the city's fair housing ordinance. When the city then decided to apply or submit a proposal in June for the small business grant, again, this time in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I submitted the city's existing fair housing ordinance, which was passed in nineteen ninety-five, and quite some time, it was basically a one-page ordinance. Since that time, ORA, the Austin Community of Rural Affairs and HUD have, HUD basically has told ORA that they needed, at that point, they needed to do a better job of updating the fair housing ordinances and making sure that all of their grantees had an updated fair housing ordinance. The last time I think that the city had actually applied for C D V G money was in early two thousands. And so when we submitted a proposal for this small business grant at the end of June, comments came back about two weeks later from ORA and said, listen, if you want to apply for this grant, you need to update the fair housing ordinance. You can use the template that the state has, that ORA has on their website that meets the HUD requirements and the ORA requirements. At that point, the city council had already met earlier in the month. So I had requested, been writing, oh, whether we could have a, a B Y on that. And they said, yes, we could, that if the grant was awarded, which the awards should be made in the week of August twenty-third, that the city could provide an updated fair housing as part of the documentation that you submit after the grant is awarded. So I had mentioned this to the mayor, and then Mickey has taken a look at the ordinance and formatted it to the format that you normally use. And just wanted to give you a heads up and an update on what that ordinance was about. So this actually brings city's fair housing ordinance up to date with regard to the HUD and ORA requirements.
Thank you, Jill. So I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty O R fifteen, the Ora Fair Housing Ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by B J Steele. Any discussion or questions for Jill on that?
I did, and it parallels very closely the state's fair housing statutes. And you could tell it was drafted by the state because it's hard to understand. I, I've looked at the, the ordinance and I've compared it with the statutes, and it's very similar to that. And I understand that many times when you do apply for these types of grants, that there are requirements that you have these types of ordinances. Basically, what it says is that if somebody alleges that there's some unfair housing practice, that the mayor's the authority that will refer them to the condition, okay? It doesn't create any penalties other than what the state statutes already have. And it really doesn't provide to do anything other than what the state statute provides.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Call for the vote. All in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty O R fifteen on the Ora Fair Housing Ordinance on its first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Due to the time sensitivity of this and our anticipation that we would like to be awarded this grant later in August, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of passing this ordinance on its second and final reading. Thank you. Our motion made by Brian Hester is our second. Seconded by B J Steele. Any additional discussion on suspending the rules? Hearing none, all in favor of suspending the rules in anticipation of approving ordinance twenty twenty O R fifteen on its second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Calling for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty O R fifteen, the Ora Fair Housing Ordinance. Motion to approve on its second and final reading. Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by B J Steele. Any additional discussion or questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved on its second reading unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen, a police department transfer of funds in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. I'll call up Chief Wolf, yeah, he's here, to make the staff recommendation on this ordinance.
Good afternoon, council. Nice to see everybody. Ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen, I am asked that the council approve the transfer of seventy-five hundred dollars from my fuel budget into my service contract budget. This is not a special appropriation, this is just a transfer of funds within my own budget. So with the new building and everything, there's been some unexpected costs. So I'm going to have to offset that by transferring some funds from the fuel into that. So that's what I'm asking for this evening.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen on the police department transfer. Motion made by Ruthie Jackson, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Any questions for Chief?
So it won't hurt your fuel budget that bad?
I am anticipating the new cars that we are getting, we're getting seven hybrid vehicles. Those are scheduled to be starting to be built August eleventh. I'm hoping to have them by October. With the fuel savings that I'm going to hopefully have with those, you know, COVID really shut down Ford, so that's put me way behind the eight ball. I should have already had them by now. So hopefully with getting those in and the fuel saves and Ford touts, that I should be fine on that. So like I said, hopefully by October, I'll, I'll have those in and should be good to go.
And this seventy-five hundred dollars, I'm still with you today. Will that carry you through to the end of the year? Are you still going to look at ways of having to be able to, if I understand it right, this pays out of that service contracts, that's like your electric, your gas, your water, your cleaning, all of that?
Yes.
And also, I understand that you're still paying for the old building and the new building?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's something you're going to need to address?
We, we are looking, the mayor and I are discussing some options regarding that old building. It's, it's currently not being used or anything right now, other than housing some evidence that's still in there that we haven't transferred over to the new building, because we have to pay for electric and alarm and security and things like that. So we are working on getting that transferred over to the new building, and then we're looking at different options of what to do with that old building. So that, that definitely is, that does affect my service contract, because like I said, I'm paying for two buildings right now. And hopefully I can get to where I'm just paying for one.
And do we have an anticipate, do you know how long this seventy-five, how far will that get to? Are we talking two months, three months, four months?
Well, I've, I've, I've already made another transfer within my own budget that, that, you know, there's certain line items that I can transfer to that I don't need council approval for. So basically, when I sit down, I kind of calculated fifteen thousand total would, would get you to the end of the year. If I calculated it correctly, obviously, there's always unexpected expenses. For right now, I believe that the seventy-five hundred from fuel and the other seventy-five hundred are already transfers. Should get me through to the next, to the end of the year. And then on next year's budget, depending what happens with the old station, I can, now that I've kind of, we've been in this building a full year, that will allow me to, whenever we start talking about budget, you know, in that line of service contract, I'll be able to have a better idea of what I need to budget for, for that line item for next year. So it's just kind of a, a learning curve, growing, if you will, with that new building, you know. When the budget came out for the last year or this year, we'd only been in that building, not even a month or two, I don't think. So that's, now next year, we'll be better prepared for that.
Okay. Other questions for Chief? Call for the vote on the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. To help Chief out, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation that we'll throw this on its second and final reading. Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor of suspending the rules in anticipation of passing ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen on its second and final reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now calling for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty O R sixteen, a police department transfer of funds in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Entertain that motion?
Make that motion.
Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Any additional questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There you go, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We have ordinance twenty twenty O R seventeen, additional appropriation for the capital trust fund. This is an ordinance sponsored by the mayor. Being ordained by the common council of the city of Charleston, Clark County, that for expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated of the funds named. So for the use, it would come out of the capital trust fund in an amount of three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in order to purchase the new garbage truck, pay off two existing garbage trucks, and pay off an older police car. Again, that amount is three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. I'll entertain a motion to approve that on its first reading.
Make a motion.
Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second?
I'm second.
I'm sorry, Brian's, sorry, the mask. Seconded by Brian Hester. Any discussion or questions on this?
I have one.
Okay.
Just filling in, I don't know what the matter is.
Oh, where?
Where it says new garbage trucks, to use it.
Okay, Donna, can we correct that before we forget? Yeah. Thank you, Ruthie. Other questions about it?
I just want to say that Brian and I sat down with Donna to try to come up with a solution for this. Thank you, Donna. Diligently went through this.
Yes.
She was, she was to help to find the money and to help us figure out a way to work through it. So thank you, Donna.
Yes, great.
Absolutely. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving ordinance twenty twenty O R seventeen on its first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of passing this on its second reading.
Make a motion.
Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second?
Want to table it?
Oh, you don't, you just don't have to, you just don't have to do it. Yeah, you can just do it. That's fine. Okay, so pass it on its first reading, put it on the agenda for the second reading next time. And Donna, will you get us an updated payoff amount when, on those loans, when, for that next meeting? I know that the clerks have gotten a payoff amount on some of those loans, with the month that'll change a bit, so. Ordinance twenty twenty O R eighteen, so this ordinance is one that, the clerks brought to my attention, Donna brought to my attention a while back. Basically, when we, when the city sold the water utility, when the city sold the water utility, the agreement, the sales agreement under item seven, the charges to the city for each disconnection under this agreement, including the corresponding reconnection, sold eighty-sixty-five dollars. So basically, every time I A W has to turn off someone's water because they shut it off willingly or they, mostly for non-payment, which they're not technically allowed to do right now, but it does happen. They charge us a sixty-five dollar reconnect fee, and so far, the city has been taking on that amount. Wastewater, right, wastewater. So we've been having to pay that, that fee ourselves. And so what we're asking is for the council to amend this sewer ordinance that will allow us to recapture that cost on our end so that it's not draining from our budget and account for the labor that's involved in our tracking of it. So that would be a seventy-dollar fee that we would charge for anybody whose wastewater gets disconnected and reconnected for lack of payment, okay? The only, I think, correction to that was, the two attorneys had looked over this, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Weber, Mr. Gillenwater, that under section four, you wanted to add and clarify that it's when water services turned off. And that was the only change, correct?
That's the only one that we had talked about.
The language just needed to clarify that.
When water service, just for clarification, because you can't turn the sewers off.
Right, it's hard to turn, you have to get the yard turned zero off, so it's basically when water's disneyed. So that was under section four.
Just, it was the same as the intended language that just clarifies what the intent was. When the water service is turned off, then there'd be this reconnect fee.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty O R eighteen, adding that disconnect reconnect fee. Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Brian Hester. Any discussion or questions on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously. Mickey Weber, since this is a fee, can this be approved on second or mostly wait another month in the second reading?
It can be approved if you, if the council wished to suspend the rules. We still have to publish it before it can take effect, but it.
Sentiment on suspending the rules on second reading, you might have any issue with that?
You have to, you have to advertise it, why don't you just wait?
We have to advertise it after it's approved on the second reading.
So if, if, if we don't suspend the rules, don't pass it on the second reading today, bring it back up in September, pass it on the second reading in September, then we publish it, and then the fee can start being collected after the publication runs.
Right, so it has to be published after the, after the final approval.
There, there's probably not a big hurry because you can't.
You can't disconnect right now anyway, so I mean, it's not.
So if you, if you want to do it now, I don't see a problem. If you want to wait a month, there's, it's probably not going to make a difference.
We're suspended right now from being able to do any disconnects anyway, so, but it's up to you guys. I'll entertain the motion to suspend if you're interested. Okay, motion, but you make a motion, Brian? All right, motion to suspend the rules made by Brian Hester, is there a second? Second, this is a raise. Seconded by Ruthie Jackson, that's who I heard first. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so calling for the second and final reading of O R twenty, twenty twenty O R eighteen on amending the sewer capacity fees for the disconnect and reconnect amount. I'll entertain a motion to approve on the second. Motion made by B J Steele, is there a second? Seconded by Brian Hester. Any additional discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that does it for the ordinance and resolutions. We have no contracts, no old business other than those. New business, animal control ordinance discussion, council. I'll open the floor for you guys to talk about that.
I, I put this on here, and it was just more for questions than it was anything. This ordinance was, I think it was two thousand and five, I believe?
Yes, about then.
Or this is great, I think it's, it's timely, it's, my only question really about it is, is there a height restriction limitation that we need to have for dogs that are fenced in? I mean, a four-foot fence, a three-foot fence, a six-foot fence? I didn't recall seeing that in there.
I can call code enforcement. Tony, do you want to speak on, was there any restrictions placed in the ordinance on the containment of the animal itself, if it was declared a vicious animal?
No, there's not. There's not, there's not any, and the highest you can go with a privacy fence in the city is six feet, so. But there is no requirement on how high it's supposed to be or the size of the pin, just on the signage and when the dog is taken off the property.
I read that it said the pin must go a foot into the ground and all that, but I didn't know if there was a height. Because if you have a big dog in a three-foot fence, that could be a little scary.
There are penalties if the dog is found, once it's declared vicious, there are penalties if the dog, so to clarify, for those who might not have seen the ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but you have, once a dog is declared a vicious animal, or any animals declared a vicious animal, there has to be a sign clearly posted, and the sign has to say dangerous vicious animal. It has set font sizes and all of that colored. They have to take out a extra insurance policy, right? Hundred thousand dollars to follow up with the city, and then they also have to.
And then they also have to contain the animal at all times. And Mr. Hester's right, there's not any specific height on the containment, but it must be contained at all times. And if it's brought off of the property, it has to be muzzled, um, and on, and on leash. Otherwise, there are penalties if they're caught running around.
The ordinance looked really good. I was just kinda curious about that.
Sure.
Okay.
There's a state statute that makes it an offense to let your animal run at large if it's not under the owner's control. So, you know, how many different laws do you wanna put into effect? I mean, if they get out of the yard, they're gonna be in violation of a couple of ordinances already.
Okay. Hold on.
Okay, um, moving on, schedule and budget workshop, council. We need to schedule a budget workshop. Um, basically, we want the clerks and everybody wants to be able to sit down, um, and go over next year's budget. It's that time of year. Um, we also, well, there's a schedule that we have to follow for filing public hearings and giving people a chance to review that budget. And I believe that we were talking about potentially calling a special meeting in August to do that, Donna? Yeah, did we have any potential dates for that?
I'd like to do it during, within the next couple of weeks. I have a meeting with the department, welcome by the department, only twenty of the particular years, the revenue that are coming in, and some changes that probably have to be addressed. Most of the changes of the revenue, what happened next year, whether we can get it done by the twentieth.
Tony, is there a plan commission meeting next Monday?
No, no, there's not.
BGA?
No, we just had those on the twenty-seventh, so there's no use in having another one.
I would propose to the council, if you're available, next Monday, the tenth, to do that at our regularly scheduled time. If this is a convenient time, would that be too soon for you? I will make sure we have all our information from our department heads by then if needed. Or if the council has another date that you would recommend, obviously, entertain that. The other option is we could do it, if you want it by the, the twentieth, we could do it Monday, the seventeenth, but I would recommend that we do it at seven PM instead of six-thirty to allow for me to attend the regular meeting. So, ten, seventeenth, what's? Ten, seventeenth, anybody have a preference?
I'm good with ten.
Good with ten, Ruthie? JT, are you hearing us? You still happy there?
Yeah, what, what was the day again?
Um, are you available on the tenth, next Monday, at six-thirty for, uh, budget workshop?
I, I am not available on Monday.
Are you available the seventeenth on that Monday? Two Mondays from now.
Yeah.
At seven? What about seven, at first seven PM, does that work? Push it back thirty minutes. Does that work for the rest of you? Seventeenth at seven, is that okay?
Yep, I'm good.
I'm sorry, we can always do it, it doesn't have to be on a Monday.
No, that's okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that'd work, okay. Seven PM on the seventeenth.
So, are we all in agreement? We'll be, so we'll have a budget workshop on the seventeenth, which is a Monday at seven PM here in the council chambers. We'll make sure we get that posted too. Mickey, I'll put that on you.
Happy to.
All right, um, and then finally, the waiting with bated breath, we have presentation from, um, Chief Wolf and I believe Chuck Ledbetter on radar speed signs.
Good evening again, council. Okay, so a project that Chuck and I have been kinda talking about, working on, uh, for a couple of months now is, um, we wanted to see if the council would be interested in funding, uh, some radar speed signs. I believe everybody should have a packet of information, um, of kinda what we're looking at. Um, we've looked at a couple of different companies. Basically, you know, one of the, the, the top complaints we get at the police department is speeding vehicles. From Bethany and Stacy Road to Four Three, to Edgewood Drive, to Lisa Lane, Bohart, Monroe Street, Main Street, Level Street, High Street, I mean, all over the city, we're, we're getting the speed complaints. And when we take those complaints, a lot of times we ask, when is this happening? Sometimes people can tell us, well, this is when it's happening, or, or, all the time, okay? Unfortunately, due to limited resources, you know, we're working at most three officers' shift, if they're tied up, they can't, they can't be in all these streets. Okay, so one of the options, and I know other communities are using, Clarksville, Jeffersonville, they're using these radar speed signs. And, you know, sometimes on the public, all they need is just a friendly reminder to slow down. We can put these signs, you know, they're movable, we can, we can put them anywhere we want to. And, uh, I'm gonna kinda let, uh, Officer Ledbetter come over here and kinda talk a little bit more about the features. He's, he's been kinda the, uh, research and design, so he's gonna talk a little bit more about the features and, and different things, uh, with the sign.
Good evening, number one. I think, um, following up with what Chief Wolf had, uh, talked about, we, our communication with the, uh, community has increased a lot, uh, with all the digital platforms that we exercise. And we ask the community to comment on issues and bring, bring different issues to our attention. And the number one is always speeding. It'd be nice if police officers could be in several places at one time. I believe, but i- in the same token, uh, when we are addressing some of these complaints, it's, uh, these are situations not out of town, out of towners, um, who are speeding and are not paying attention, but it's, it's, uh, it's our neighbors and, and a lot of times, they just need a friendly reminder. So when we did some research and, and especially while triaging a lot of complaints and concerns voiced by the neighborhood watch, uh, members, and looking at, at various communities who were addressing the same problem, these signs came up as a, um, a possibility. We'd like to see one placed in each, uh, council district so that it could be dedicated to that district to address, uh, concerns on a bi-weekly or probably monthly basis, moving, moving these signs around. Uh, I've spoken with the street department superintendent, um, this, he assures me this wouldn't put a undue strain on them. Uh, through working through the ID, IT department at the police department, we can get them, uh, easily reprogrammed as needed. Uh, I think the literature that we handed out shows all the different types of options that, uh, come with these types of signs, but, um, the, this, statistics and studies have really shown that these signs really calm traffic and it's, it's created that type of terminology, uh, not only nationwide, but internationally. So, uh, each one of these signs have various colors to get your attention. Green is nice and pleasant, thank you for going the speed limit, all the way up to red, hey, what are you doing? You're going way too fast, there's kids at play. Uh, we can program any number of messages on these signs, uh, as, as we would like. I think there's, uh, many different types of, um, benefits that they'll provide the city in addition to, uh, all the features that I've provided you information. I, you probably don't need me to read it to you. Uh, however, if there are any questions about those, I'll let you know, or please let me know. The, other than the friendly reminder to neighborhoods, uh, it allows the police department, uh, an efficient manner to target areas that need extra targeting in a more narrow timeframe. So if we know, according to the data that these signs produce, that between hours of four and five, people on average are speeding, um, twelve, thirteen, fifteen miles per hour over the speed limit in a particular area, based on the, then it's easier to assign an officer to a smaller timeframe instead of just telling an entire shift, hey, you need to hit Edgewood more this day or need to hit, uh, Monroe, Main, High Street, whatever street it may be. So the efficiency of us create, providing targeted traffic control, traffic patrol for speeders, uh, throughout the community, saves money. Also saves, saves a lot of time. These same traffic studies that we'll be able to get from these signs will also benefit, uh, city services with maintenance concerns, uh, with improvements that might need to be addressed, but also the planning and zoning commission where they're considering, uh, nearby developments. It will give you how many cars are traveling within the city. It's, you know, we, we wait for that, get that on state roads, but this way we will have an internal way of doing it, uh, at the city level and get quite accurate, uh, bidirectional. So even though the, the sign is on or not, or showing a, a, a speed limit, I should say, it's going to read and, and, um, identify that vehicle traveling past. I would wanna point out that, um, these signs do not have cameras on them. They do not log license plates. There's no intrusion of any type of privacy. Merely only collecting one, one thing and one thing only is that, and that is traffic data. Uh, the number of cars, volume, the time of day that that volume is occurring and what speeds are traveling. Uh, other than that, I think everything else is pretty much, uh, self-explanatory. However, uh, I'm willing to talk about any type of features, uh, that, that you see. That the, the example of the, uh, data report that it produces is several pages. I mean, it's probably more data than normally we would use, but maybe, uh, the planning and zoning commission might find that type of data just as beneficial as what the police department would enforce. But it's, you know, sometimes people wanna see a police car, sometimes a sign that flashes, uh, serves the same purpose and sometimes even more, most times more efficiently, so.
What do you guys mount them to?
They, they can be, they can go on a four-inch post or they can also go on the regular sign, um, signpost that you would see at the old stop sign, just an extra long, uh, extra tall one because it has to have a solar panel at the top for its battery repairing.
So this is solar panel?
Yes, yes. The quote provided is for, is for a solar battery backup with a two-year warranty. Uh, the batteries, um, realistically, uh, they claim to, to last two years on average anyway, so. They no one, an on, no ongoing costs like some of the other products that, that we looked at that are the same, same, have some of the same features, you know, you do everything from getting information from the cloud remotely, um, programming them. That's kinda over the top for what, what we would wanna leave them for, so, uh, whoever's in charge of programming them, we just download an app and, and keep track of what we, what we program them. But no ongoing costs like some of the other, uh, like competitor signs that they have, which is about twice as much.
No yearly service fees?
No, no. And we intend to get them on the, the city's, um, asset, um, rolls so that they can be covered under insurance, just in case. Did I miss anything, Chief?
Huh?
Did I miss anything?
Good.
I just wanna commend you, so when you first came, you had a twenty thousand dollar quote and you stopped around and got it, so I'm gonna, thank you.
No problem.
I think, I think too, you know, just kinda piggyback, you know, times are tough, COVID, people are out of work. You know, I think these signs will be good, slow people down. They really don't want a hundred and eighty dollar ticket, you know? So hopefully this will kinda curb, you know, like I said, sometimes people just need a friendly reminder, you know? Hey, slow down, going a little fast, you know? People go to work and, you know, they just need, they don't need a ticket, they just need a little friendly reminder, so, um, hopefully this'll, this'll help the fact too.
We texted everyone a video of one of the signs, actually, in case you just wanted to see something, just to expect, but, very customizable.
Donna, is this something you need them to vote to for the fund or, or, have you, have you guys talked about funding, like where it's coming from or?
We've talked about it.
Yeah, we, we have talked about it and what we'll be able to do, it's gonna be good for the parks, watching, and, 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 we'll be able to share it, because of the cost for, for different departments. We will be able to fund it after, no problem, and stick with it in our budget.
So, I mean, for formality, I'll entertain a motion to, for the council to approve and sharing in the funding of this, of these signs.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Ruthie Jackson. Is there a second? Seconded by Bo, was that Bo? Okay. I, I gotta, I can't see your mouths, but Bo Burd, I'm second. Is it, any additional questions for Chief or Mr. London?
We have a, um, there's a quote I can provide here, I just don't have it.
Just don't have the invoice yet? I think it's on that, I think, that's the quote.
It's at the...
Okay, I have it.
That's it, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of approving the purchase of the signs for the police department, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Council comments? Anything from the council? JT, anything from you, are you on there?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I just wanna, I wanna thank everybody that helped with the milk bill by this past week. Prairie Farms donated four thousand three hundred twenty gallons to, uh, the North Park County Center and went out to our community. That's twice in a month that we've been able to put over four thousand gallons in our county community and, and touched a lot of people. So, thank you, everybody that helped the city, Tobby, the streets, a lot of people have had a hand in it and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Any other comments? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion since JT's...
Oh, JT's slow on the uptake, so BJ Steele makes that motion. JT's second. All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, JT. All right, Leo, I'm leaving that to you, so.
I got it.
Leave it up where I'll put it in my room. With cartoons on it or something.
Do it. Hey, you can't, you can't really get it to your... I think I'm gonna...
I've got five TVs in my house. And four of them are always on cartoons.
Oh, yeah, I don't know that guy.
Or YouTube.
Tell me about it.
Or YouTube cartoons. Well, no, it's, what's that, Ryan's World or something like that, crazy stuff.